All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board. Today is Tuesday, July 20th. It is 7 o'clock PM. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Laura, can you do the roll call, please?
Grandlin?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Samurai? Severson?
Mueller?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Oh, and Superintendent Stenbik?
Here.
Great, thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We will start with the agenda approval, adjustments, and announcements and correspondence. First is the approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Distentions? Motion carries. Announcements, we have August 10th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. August 17th, Tuesday, 5:30 PM is the school board work session here in the community room. And August 24th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM is the regular school board meeting here in the community room. Move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Vice Chair Mueller, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Next, moving on to citizens and employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration followed up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. I don't believe we have anybody here. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, which includes the personal report and the school board minutes from June 8th and 22nd, regular school board meeting, the June 15th work session, and June 15th special called meeting. And a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Stayed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to discussion reports and information items with reports from members of the board. Why don't we start with Laura?
Why, thank you. I guess I would like to start with the parade. It was really incredibly awesome to get out and see people, and it was very well attended. And everybody just looked so relieved to just be able to have that human interaction. And it was great because, like, everybody was there. So I really enjoyed that, and it's great to be able to participate in that type of an activity as a school board member. The only other thing that I did was I attended an executive board meeting with the new superintendent, Dr. Val Rae Bo over at 916. And we kind of discussed some of the first steps on being able to work together as a board with the new superintendent and how we were going to be checking in with her and, you know, and be able to do what we can to support her during this transition. That's it for me.
Great, thanks Laura. Molly?
Yeah, I also attended the parade, same as Laura. It was great, great turnout. And then I was able to go down to the Centennial Celebration for the city this past weekend, which was wonderful as well, and really no school-related duties, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
So I also went to the parade. It was pretty fantastic. It was a lot more work than throwing candy at other parades, so that's interesting, right? It was fantastic to see everybody. I also went to the Centennial Celebration, which was really pretty fancy. It was just a lot of fun. We served, I think, 600 pieces of cake. So we cut all the cake and we're serving it. And then we, what was the other thing that I did? Oh, and I've had a lot of families reaching out and really curious about what the next school year is going to bring, especially with new CDC guidelines and the AAP recommendations and things. So I'm really excited to see that on the agenda today, so.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And like all of you, I attended the Jamboree Parade and echo that it was a great time. And people got really excited for the Highlander Tattoos, which is kind of fun, both children and adults, I think, enjoyed those. I was also at the Centennial Celebration, so although I don't think I saw either of you.
I saw you briefly.
Oh, okay. I'm like, so there's a lot of people there, and kind of in and out, so that was fun. Happy birthday, Columbia Heights. That was really a great, a great event. And then I attended the chair meeting just prior to this meeting. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Stenbik?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. So far this summer, we've had wonderful opportunities to partner with the city of Columbia Heights, so it was really great to see everyone out at the Jamboree Parade, the board members and the whole community. I've heard from some of the students that they also received, you know, tattoos and information from the football players. So that was a really big impact on some of our youngest community members. I was also able to attend the Centennial Event where the Columbia Heights Public Schools booth gave out books to children. So they scored a soccer goal and got a book and a tattoo and other swag that we had. It was really fun. Great turnout, and it was great to see many of you there. Across the district, we're very busy with many summer school program offerings, our summer program offerings for all ages. And we also have a few building maintenance programs or projects happening. Fax Room, for example, and others around, around. And right now, the team is working through the plans for welcoming students, staff, and families back in the fall. So more on that to come.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the 2021-2022 school year update, and we've got Superintendent Stenbik presenting that for us.
All right, I am going to share my screen then. Okay, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. Here this evening, I'm here to present some of the information that we have. Unfortunately, we don't have all of the detailed information that people are seeking, but that will be forthcoming as plans develop. So our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values will be represented, all of them, of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This is an informational update at this time. There will be no governance question. So starting off with state and federal guidance. As you all know, the governor's peacetime emergency executive powers have expired. So that means, as of last Friday, when working with the commissioner, no special kind of learning model requirements like we had last school year. That's, that went away with those executive orders. So what I've been told is that the Minnesota Department of Education and the Minnesota Department of Health will offer recommendations, not requirements, until further notice. I mean, I think we all need to be flexible, and as we move into the fall months, I'm just prepared that anything can happen, but as of this time, as of last Friday, this is what we're being told. There are some federal requirements still in place. So for example, federally, all public transportation, including, it's listed out there, school buses, masks are required. So we're balancing the recommendations versus the requirements by the feds. Learning model, on just last Friday, we received an update from the Department of Education. I'm expecting that will happen throughout the next month as we go, that more guidance will be given, which makes it challenging, I think, to communicate out to families the information that they're really seeking. However, so on Friday, we learned that there are some options for school districts to offer online and blended learning. So the word distance learning goes away with the executive orders, right? In Minnesota legislature, it's online and blended learning, so that's what we'll be talking about. Really looking at what we can offer here in Columbia Heights Public Schools. We did have a spring survey for parents and guardians, and we had very little interest on that survey for full online learning. However, we did have a lot of responses of parents saying, "I'm just not sure yet." And so that's the reality that we're facing right now as well. Right now, we're working, the admin team is working to set times where we can meet with teacher leaders and stakeholders to talk about those blended learning options. We did become an approved online provider, which gives us a lot of flexibility. So there are some different options out there that we're exploring. One thing we want to make sure we're doing is learn, utilize what we've learned, right? And apply it to this upcoming school year with that flexibility. Last year, as we were applying to be an online learning, we were really focusing in on, you know, starting small with the high school because that's the capacity that we have as a small district. You know, what courses could we offer at the high school where students would have that opportunity for hybrid? So again, like everything else, more to come in the next few weeks. You know, oftentimes, July is really that time where school staff are, they're not here. So a couple more weeks and we'll have, we'll have things nailed down. Health and safety, just a reminder, we've extensively reviewed our fresh air exchange systems in schools and know, you know, where areas might need to be upgraded and where, you know, we're able to really control that flow of fresh air coming in and where, you know, places like the hallway, for example, that don't have the fresh air exchange, so we know where kids need to be. We're also still, you know, planning to do physical distancing as possible, and I know there's questions about, is it three feet or is it six feet? And so we're working through all of those pieces, but it's still, you know, top priority. I just put the word masks there because we'll come out with specific guidance and requirements. And I'll just be really frank with everyone that the science hasn't changed around masks, particularly for unvaccinated people. So right now, I'm leaning towards requiring masks for unvaccinated people that are ages four and up. We all know that children ages 11 and under don't even have the opportunity to get the vaccine. And so for their own health and safety, and just, again, we've been steeped in the science for the last year plus, and that hasn't changed. So that's where I'm leaning. In a few weeks, a couple of weeks, we'll have district communication going out, you know, school principal communication going out. I do, I do want to confer with the teams, you know, and the different stakeholders. And when it comes to adults, it's, you know, it basically will be working through that process as well. Really, the same message of stay home if you're sick. And unfortunately, the legislature did not approve in this current session that flexibility for educational agencies to make that decision of if a student is sick, you know, it would be nice if they could still zoom in. And they were really opposed to any type of concurrent instruction. I know that concurrent instruction is really challenging when you have half your class at home zooming in and half your class in front of you. But in the case of a student, for example, with a broken leg, it would be nice if that child didn't have to miss school if they could zoom in. But for this session, they did not afford us that decision-making power as a school district. So again, we'll see what kind of flexibility in legislature we have with that blended learning option to just provide the best options for families and students in those cases. You know, I think in the past, kids may have been sent to school with a sniffle here and there, and, you know, these days, we're pretty hyper-aware of those things, of course. At this point, we're not required to do daily monitoring of local COVID case rates. We are, however, continuing to do the weekly monitoring of COVID case rates. And currently, our current weekly, you know, the two-week case rate is 12 here locally, which is at the very bottom, at that minimal stage of that chart that you've been used to seeing throughout the last school year. All of the reports that we're seeing from the FDA that we're expecting approval of a youth COVID vaccination, fall to midwinter, my understanding is that it might be a rollout in different grade bands, so we don't have a specific date yet, but different age bands would have access to that. And that will really, really help everything that we do moving forward. Another thing that we're going to be focusing on this fall is Heighten Up, our new Heighten Up program and approach, right? So we have two years of federal support, you know, additional federal stimulus support. We know that we need to do some academic acceleration after the last year and a half that all of our children have experienced. I think that Columbia Heights did an outstanding job with distance learning. But we also, the realities are, there's a need for academic acceleration, there's a need for mental health support. And we had, we also saw a decline in enrollment. So really, we're looking at, instead of having equity being one of the bullet points, really looking at equity means not only just doing a self-examination of historical racism in our society and doing the self-reflection, but it's also like showing measurable impacts and outcomes when it comes to academic acceleration. Really looking at those mental health supports, true connections with families and community engagement, right? And then, as also as part of Heighten Up, facility upgrades for safety, for health and safety. So this is something we'll be rolling out this, you know, this fall with all of our staff and community. And not sure if it's going to be a fun t-shirt yet or not, but maybe. Highlanders Have Heart really was resonated. Heighten Up, I don't know. Anyway, so that's what we're looking at there. And then lastly, communication is crucial. So we have an ever-changing landscape. And so we will, we are committed to updating our practices and procedures as new guidance is received. And I'm expecting that we'll have to do that and communicate really well out to our stakeholders. So families can expect to receive very specific information from their child's school in August. One thing I did want to note that we're, rather than having these large open houses with 800 people showing up in a building, the buildings will be scheduling, you know, offering orientation. Look a little bit different at elementary and secondary level. But so September 1st, or September 7th, excuse me, which is the first, you know, technically the first day of school, that Tuesday after Labor Day is going to be more of an orientation day. And some of the schools the week prior will also be scheduling orientation appointments. The rationale for this is, this is what we did last school year to start off the year and got really positive feedback from families that they loved having, like at elementaries, for example, a safe socially-distanced, masks-on, safe sit-down with the teacher. The student got screened for reading and math, for example. The families were able to chat with the teacher, get the device, and, you know, just have an orientation like that. Whereas the open houses is a big crowd, and they can do all, get all of that information as well. But just a different approach until we're really, really, you know, further down the road with COVID. Is that, is the plan. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Thank you. Questions?
I actually have a question. I was wondering, as far as the mask, our mask policy is, does that allow for the flexibility of being able to do that? Or do we need to look at that policy again?
Thanks for asking that question about masks. Right now, in our current mask or face-covering policy, there is a line, there's a clause in there that says, "We will follow the most up-to-date guidance," you know, "and then update the policy as soon as practicable." You know, because the policy, the Subcommittee on Policy doesn't meet as frequently, and we know the guidance changes faster than the Subcommittee meets. So there is flexibility written in on purpose for that reason. And it is something that the Subcommittee will need to look at right away in the first meeting. Thanks.
Other questions? Thanks, Laura.
I just have a comment. I think it's really, I liked your, I liked the presentation. I'm glad to hear some of the steps that we're taking and everything. I really appreciated your comment about the science hasn't changed, especially as we're seeing the Delta variant come and hit the kids. You know, they talk about COVID is really impacting those that are unvaccinated. And within that category, we, I think, the general public often forgets that children under 12 are also part of that, you know, the group that's getting hit really hard. And so I appreciate that you specifically called sort of the mask policy out and are really taking into account what the science is saying about it. It, I don't enjoy wearing a mask. This isn't great. Although, I have saved some costs on makeup, so you don't have to wear lipstick as much, right? But I do think, you know, I also say, having worked in childcare for the last 10 years, this is the healthiest I've been in the last, like, over the winter time. Just because of the spread is definitely mitigated, so I appreciate that. And I'm interested to see how that plays out, so thank you for explicitly addressing that.
If I could just reiterate, our students in our summer programs right now are wearing masks, you know, at the 12, you know, 11 and under. And I've gone out and observed them myself, and they're doing great. The kids are wearing them without complaint. When they go outside, they get to take them off. And of course, when they're eating their meals and whatnot, they're taking them off. But we're just not hearing a big uproar against mask-wearing right now in our district. And in fact, it's quite the opposite. Parents have been reaching out to me urging that masks be required for students, you know, for unvaccinated people, we'll just say that. We did, you know, we did find some challenges with the tinier children, so. So we can only go down so far.
Thank you. Can I ask, or did you?
Go ahead.
I actually have a follow-up question on that. It's definitely would be, it would definitely, as far as the science is concerned, to have people, especially that are unvaccinated, to be wearing masks. But I'm kind of wondering, as far as, like HIPAA and privacy, whether or not it's encouraged or whether or not we have the ability to ask whether or not somebody's been vaccinated. I don't think we can, but I'm not sure.
So under the executive orders that were in place and that are now expired, we were able to, under those executive orders, mostly because of contact tracing. The, we would get, you know, it wasn't public knowledge. It was limited to, you know, the director of HR, for example. So, you know, that person needed to do contact tracing, and a vaccine and a non-vaccine, there was different responses that needed to take place. In addition to unvaccinated people, we have a lot, we are strongly encouraging and recommending that even vaccinated people wear a mask. Personally, if I'm in a crowd of people, I do wear a mask. I wear a mask if I go to the store, you know, if I'm near a lot of people. This is the first time that many of us have been in this room without a mask on, so I just want to acknowledge that. And we do have a lot of districts, you know, staff around the district that are vaccinated and continue to wear a mask.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any identifying things to single unvaccinated people from vaccinated people? I'm just kind of worried about, maybe there might be a little bit of judgment or whatever with that situation and just would be concerned about that. So, and I'm sure that you thought that all through. I just wasn't entirely sure what latitude we had.
Well, it is one of the reasons why before we do make this big sweeping rule that we'll be connecting with stakeholders. You know, we do want to hear those concerns from stakeholders, so, thank you.
Can I just add that I know that it is not, masks aren't mandated a lot of places right now, and the CDC has said, like, they've had some different things, but different counties like in LA have now started mandating it again. And there's some concern about whether or not there's going to be the people, like the first responders and people in the first wave that were vaccinated, and one of which was me. Like, there may be some waning, and so I think you just never know if people are vaccinated or not. And I don't know that, I've had people assume that I'm not vaccinated because I wear my mask. So I think, but I think it's a really good point, and I'm glad that you brought it up, and.
Molly?
I was going to ask a similar question, just like in terms of high school attendance, middle school attendance for, you know, 13 and up, if they haven't been, how that looks. Are you communicating with other superintendents, which I'm sure you are, but I guess just more, more or less curious? But I don't know that we need to even cross that bridge because a month from now, we might have guidance, so, that's all.
Currently, I think it's split. The districts are doing different things, so, yeah. Great, thank you.
Thanks. I also just want to reiterate too, I know Superintendent Stenbik, you said this in your presentation, but for those that are watching that are maybe looking for more concrete information about what the fall's going to look like, some of the guidance that you're getting just came out on Friday.
Correct.
Just like four days ago.
Yes.
So it'll take a little bit of time.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to the next item, Metro XU membership. We have Director Tuckrell who will be presenting for us.
All right. Good evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here tonight to share about our Metro Educational Cooperative Service membership, which we refer to as Metro XU membership. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and really focusing in on the core values tonight of excellence and innovation as we think about our membership. Tonight, I'm here as an informational item, and will be returning August 10th, seeking approval for renewing our membership with Metro XU. The Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Service Unit has created a collaboration between many districts in order to offer services to districts at a lower cost. And this has been happening since 1976. And they offer quite a few services, and it changes every year. They seem to increase them. But in Columbia Heights, we really take advantage of many of these opportunities, which support professional development, student support, support of Praxis Para Pro Assessment, support some classroom programs that we've taken advantage of, district cooperative purchasing, environmental health and safety, as well as a statewide partnership for concurrent enrollment. Last year in Columbia Heights, these were our numbers for the different areas. And I noted at the bottom that our participation was a little lower last year due to COVID. A lot of the programs were either postponed or not able to happen, or we didn't take advantage of some of the different pieces, as well as the annual class size study, which they put out, was postponed due to COVID. But we still had quite a bit of participation in professional development, as well as special education training. One great network that came out of this was Metro XU has an affinity network for teachers of color or staff of color to join, and it's throughout the districts all over. So it was nice to come together as a district from Columbia Heights, hearing what's happening in different districts in terms of supporting our teachers of color, since that was a big goal for us and will continue to be. So the proposal is to continue the membership, and as we look at participation, we would like to continue in the areas discussed earlier, but also look at that statewide partnership for concurrent enrollment. As we increase our number of offerings at the high school that have concurrent enrollment with Anoka Ramsey or with Century College, our teachers need to have certain credentials. And with those credentials comes education. And Metro XU offers an opportunity to help provide scholarships or tuition reimbursement, support our teachers with getting those educational credits that they would need to be accredited for teaching those concurrent enrollment classes. So we're excited to take advantage of that this year and really look at the opportunities that we have. The membership cost has not changed from last year. It continues to be a flat rate of $700, and then it's 90 cents per pupil, and they use October 1st count. So the fee for Columbia Heights would be just over $3,500 to continue our membership into next year. So tonight is an informational item, and I'll be coming back August 10th to seek approval of the membership for the Metro XU for the 2021-2022 school year. Any questions?
Questions for Director Tuckrell? All right, well, thank you, Director Tuckrell.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night.
You too. Next, we'll move on to the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD membership, and Superintendent Stenbik is going to present on that for us.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The Association of Metropolitan School Districts, or as we refer to it, AMSD, truly has been crucial this year, you know, above all years. They held weekly meetings for superintendents to collaborate and come together. The commissioner often attended those meetings. Local public health officials attended the meetings. The governor came a couple of times to the meetings as well. So in terms of collaboration and support, it was crucial. So this year, the budget proposed by AMSD, or the fee, which was approved by their Board of Directors, has all of the membership fees flat for the coming year in recognition of the challenging budget environment. So it actually is a decrease of $124 for us. So we're looking at $8,542. So we're looking at $8,542. So it's a little bit less than what it has been in the past. And AMSD is really an advocacy group around legislation, right, Minnesota Legislature, lobbying and advocacy and information flow. They pull groups together, they provide an incredible amount of information on their website, they provide trainings, they provide presentations, and then regular monthly meetings where 40-plus districts come together and share and learn together. It's really crucial as a public entity that we keep up with what's happening with, you know, the legislative session. And they keep us informed and they help us advocate, and they help our staff and our community advocate for what public education needs. So that's, you know, in a nutshell, what AMSD does. And this will come to the next board meeting as an action item for the board's approval for the $8,542 membership fee.
Thank you. Any questions? Laura?
Just a comment, that's, they do actually quite a bit for us. In addition to that, from the way I understand it, from various directors, that anytime the legislation messes around with any statutes and school board, that they're the first ones to really be able to get a handle on it. Whereas, you know, even trying to contact the Minnesota Department of Education, they don't seem to have quite the same grasp. Maybe they're looking at it with a slightly different lens, you know? So being able to have that resource for being able to make sure that we're doing things the way that we're supposed to. So that is, that is worth the fee, just even by itself. It's like having a lawyer on your side that you can just say, hey, you know, this looks kind of weird. Am I doing this formula right? You know, because they messed with the formula again. They never do that though, right? Is Brian around? Yeah, I just wanted to point that out too.
Great, thanks Laura. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Superintendent Stenbik.
Thank you.
Next, we will move on to our action items. And first up, we have our, well, our only action item, the 2021-2022 Employee Handbook. And we have Elizabeth Brucey with us.
Evening, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. Tonight, I'm here to present the 2021-2022 Employee Handbook. There were very minimal changes, including updating contact information, adding Title IX and reviewing policies. So due to the minimal changes, no legal review was required. After school board approval, the employee handbook will be disseminated to staff for review and they will then sign off on an acknowledgement form. Therefore, tonight, the school board is being asked to approve the 2021-2022 Employee Handbook as presented.
Great, thank you. Questions? All right, hearing none, we will get a motion to approve the employee handbook as presented. All moved? Mary?
Second.
Molly, thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will move to our next item, which is entering into closed session. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.03, the board will meet in closed session for the item on the agenda, which is the purpose of discussing negotiations strategy. So I believe we need to have a vote on that? Thank you. Need a motion to move into closed session?
All moved.
Molly?
Second.
Laura? Any discussion? All right, hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We will move into closed session. Okay, great, thank you. We are returning to our open meeting based, in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.03, we were closed for the purpose of negotiation strategy. Next, moving, our next item is board topics. Any board topics from anybody? Laura?
I do. I just heard that MSBA's model policies will now be looked at through an equity lens.
Oh, yes.
So that's upcoming. We'll have to see, maybe send them some of our policies so that they can, you know, get, because there's a lot of policies to go over and they've never managed to burn through them super quick to be able to get them in line with our, with equity goals. So I thought that was really exciting because maybe we don't have to do quite so much work on them. But anyway, I thought that was good.
Great update, thank you. Any other board topics?
I think just Eid Mubarak to everyone who celebrates. It's Eid Paladha, I think, so.
Yes, great. Thank you. Anything else? All right, nothing else then, we will adjourn the meeting, do I hit the gavel? At 8:04.